So at 6:04.
She's already started.
Do you want to record this because we didn't record the last one?
Yes, well, we do have PEG TV with us.
Oh, I know.
However, do you want me to record and stop for the tour? Take it for the tour?
I could take it. I could take it on the tour.
I don't know. Okay, so we're starting.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. So if I could get someone to make a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
Hold on.
Second.
Thank you. Anything that we need to add or subtract? I don't think so.
Yeah, I have something to add. I'd like to move that we include a discussion of... I want to move to mend the agenda to include a discussion of the desirability for having volunteers in the schools.
Well, that's tonight's about facilities. That we could talk about that at our next meeting, but...
Well, I just think it's a critical issue, so that's why I'm moving it.
What's everybody's thoughts?
Laurie, I personally feel... I just got done looking at the PEG TV of the October meeting, and there was a lot to discuss there.
I know.
I personally think that our focus would be better to stay on that topic and accept Kevin's motion for the next meeting.
I mean, I'm for discussing it tonight. I mean...
Well, it all depends on how long it takes. I mean, we've only got two hours, and we didn't get to really talk about our discussion last time, and I don't want to lose momentum, so...
I understand.
And I understand that this is about volunteering. It's not about facilities, so... And that's what the second meeting of the month is about.
There's no time...
I'll leave it to you, so...
Is there any time constraint? Like, is there any reason why it needs to happen, like, right now?
I think we have a crisis in the schools. I think we've been hearing about that every meeting for the entire quarter. And I think that we, as a board, need to act upon that.
I agree with Barry. It's an issue, but we need to stay focused on our facility discussion.
And we need to get that done before the end of the year, so... Actually, we need to get it done now, so...
Okay. So I'm looking at everybody else. I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are. I think we're in a quorum one way or the other, I suppose.
Is there a motion?
Well, the motion is to add it to the agenda.
It's got to be seconded.
It hasn't been seconded.
Right, it has not been seconded.
I'll second it. I think it's something that should be discussed as well.
All right. So, any other discussion about it before we vote? Barbara?
What did I miss? Sorry.
So Kevin would like to add to the agenda to talk about volunteering at school. My suggestion was that tonight is about facilities, and we did not really get a chance to talk about facilities last time. So I was asking everybody what their thoughts were.
Thank you.
If we push it to the next meeting, and I'm just thinking about the calendar. It's the next meeting, December first. It's a Wednesday, so it's two weeks from tonight.
Yes.
And we're... Schools are closed most of next week. So we're not talking...
Right.
A lot of school time if we... If we push it to... It's not even a full two weeks, so the school's closed three days.
Right.
Just making sure I had December first on the right day.
I understand. Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, maybe we could make the tour a little faster and do our essential business.
Well, if we have time at the end of the meeting, we'll discuss it. But I think at this point, we really need to talk about facilities.
You should take it up.
But we are... But we're going to do voting right now. All those in favor of Kevin's motion to add a discussion regarding volunteering at the high school, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need a raise of... I need a show of hands. All those opposed? Okay, the noes have it. So if we have time at the end, I will entertain it again, but at this point, we really do need to talk about facilities. Okay. Any other... Anything else regarding the agenda? Okay. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We have an agenda. Okay. We're going to do a tour of the Nashouby Elementary School.
And those of you online, I'll take you with us.
Okay.
All these different walking trails in Brandon Forest, Delaware.
Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Board's like, "Talk." Is there anyone here who wants to talk to the board in regards to something other than facilities or something that's come up? I think it... Okay. I haven't had any issues, so... Or any...
Oh, wait. Is this...
Communications.
Yes. So I've invited... I see his hand up, too. I invited Bill Moore to join us.
Oh, right.
Bill met with Brenda Fleming, Dave Atherton, and myself, and has a proposal that we don't want you to react... To answer, but we want it as part of your thoughts on the facilities process. So, Bill, you want to...
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hello, everybody. Welcome. Bill Moore, Rec Director, Department of Development Officer for the town of Brandon. I know just about everybody. If I don't know you, hello. So, yeah, I reached out to Jean and Brenda and met with my boss, the Town Manager of Brandon, Dave Atherton, to talk about this idea that we had. Been around for a little while. And I just wanted to present this to you guys and just have you consume it, think about it, have it wash over you, process. So, you know, background on what I've been thinking about. I know that with the Act 46 consolidation of the school district, right around that time, I think it was directly maybe following that, there was a... There was an idea put forth to build a gymnasium on the Nashouby school campus. And it was close, but it ended up going down, I think by a margin of maybe 80 votes, if I recall correctly. It was close, but no cigar. And I felt like that was really sort of the best chance at least at that time for the possibility of that kind of an expansion of a gymnasium space on Nashouby's campus. And that's where I do a lot of my indoor activities with our youth. I sort of serve as the de facto athletic director for the youth of the Nashouby School and even now more so with the Otter Creek Academy. At that time, Leicester School and Sudbury School. And so I've just been kind of racking my brain about a way to try and solve that issue, the fact that we do need gym space. You guys are currently meeting in your gymatorium, you know, cafeteria space that I know your dedicated custodial staff, that by fantastic Mr. Clay has to knock that space down and put it back up with gym classes as well with our... You know, when we do rec activities, we're starting to move into our rec activities indoors. You know, it's just time-consuming. It's not a great space. It's not large enough to really host events. And that there's a need within our communities for that kind of a space. And so, you know, I don't know if I fell or an apple came and hit me when I was eating out on the tree, but I thought about an idea that potentially could work to try and provide some space for the Nashouby School and the Brandon Rec and the community... Our community writ large. And I know that you guys own some space that is to the north and slightly east of the school. It runs by where the daycare is. It runs back up alongside the playground. And I thought, if there was some way that we could use that space to build a facility that could serve both of our purposes. And understanding that, you know, that something like that would be a huge idea, require a lot of moving parts with potentially the school giving us the opportunity to build on that spot. We may have to take ownership to make that happen. But again, I'm getting ahead of myself. But about building some sort of... Oops. But I don't have my fantastic pictures that I shared with Brenda and Jean. But I just wanted to explore the possibility, the feasibility of the town building a large facility that would be adjacent to the Nashouby School, that would be used by the school and also used by the town, that would potentially have a large gym that would be used by the school during the school day, a smaller gym that would be sectioned off from the larger gym that would have access that the public could possibly use with a separate entrance, and a pool as well, and possibly a community workout space that would sit on that space next to the Nashouby School. And again, like, it's a huge idea. There's not a lot of... This is just an idea. And again, I wish you could see my drawings because it really sort of brought it all to light. But in all seriousness, you know, there is money out there within the municipal government to apply for and get funding for exploring these kinds of ideas. And so, you know, as those start to come online, I just wanted to sort of have you guys think about that. And I wouldn't commit you guys to anything, but if I were to see an opportunity to apply for municipal planning grant that would allow just to determine the feasibility, a general sketch-up, not even engineering, but the idea of whether, one, something like that could be possible, two, what it would look like, and three, what the cost would be to work toward trying to fund something like that. And again, we're open to any and all ideas and concepts, and whether it's the town taking ownership of it, understanding that maybe the Otter Valley Unified Youth School District might have difficulties in securing funding from the other towns to fund something on one town's property. You know, addressing security issues, you know, if we were ever even moved closer to them, the funding would be on the town and the school to sort of work together. But really, the town would have to own this to make it work, I think. But again, like, that's what a feasibility study would be about, so... I'd happen to field any questions. I know I just threw up a lot on you in disorganized fashion, but I'm definitely available for any questions you might have now or outside of the meeting.
So, Bill, when are these funds that you're talking about that you could apply for? When do you think they're going to come online?
So the last... It would be something that would probably fiscal year '22, '23.
Okay.
Those municipal planning grants come available. I'd probably look to have to think about... I think the deadline is the beginning of July, August, somewhere in there. That's where I would need to, again, apply for just the money to fund a feasibility study.
Right, right. Okay. So I was just trying to figure out the timeline, like, how fast do you need to know from us? I mean, obviously sooner rather than later, but how that would, you know... I didn't really...
You know, like, I know you guys are in the middle of budget season. I know you guys... I mean, I know I'm in the middle of budget season and trying to prepare budgets. I just wanted to be something you guys were thinking about, especially as you look at your infrastructure, that this is a possible solution, that creative solution that the town could help try to provide. You know, be a win-win-win. You know, win being the school, win being the town, and win being the...
And I would add that Brenda and I were really interested as well in you bringing it to the board just as you're considering all of your facilities. It's a creative idea, a creative partnership. If it actually came to be, we could actually teach kids how to swim out here on the lake. I mean, in a swimming pool, so they could go to the lake. So who knows? It is... It's a grandiose idea. Bill thinks big, but we're throwing it out there.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Bill, it might be useful for you to come back and show us a map, and maybe we can discuss it in further detail sometime.
I think I caught that, Dr. Thornton D., that you're asking for a map. I can absolutely... I would love to share with you my artwork that I drew up on Microsoft Paint, mind you, over a Google satellite image of the school, so you can get kind of an idea of what I'm thinking about. I think many architects and designers would be appalled, but it would sort of give you a real basic idea about what I'm looking at. Like, it was a subject of much derision at the meeting with Brenda and... Brenda and me in particular. No, no. Absolutely. I'll forward that on to the entire school board by way by through Jean.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for letting me interrupt your meeting.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill, do you think that the town can... Will be able to fund it and get grants for it? Is that what you're saying?
So, I mean, that, you know, that's... This is kind of the first, you know, the pre-step, the first step to even consider this. Like, you know, I wouldn't want an article written about this necessarily because I think, you know, like... I mean, I just... I mean, it's not a typical meeting, but I did feel this is, you know, trial balloon of a dream of a...
Yeah, it's a concept. Just a concept. Understood. But depending on what the... Depending on what the cost is, is what you're saying, is it will depend on if the town can fund it or if grants can fund it, or maybe all three, but, you know... But once you have the feasibility study, you can go through those processes and figure out what can be done financially.
Exactly. Those are the things that, yeah, feasibility sort of kind of brings it home and gives you some real rough numbers and maybe gives you potential avenues to investigate. I imagine something like this, if it were to, you know, come to fruition and we get to a point where we would start doing fundraising that it would require probably a decent-sized municipal bond, some grant money, some capital fundraising efforts on the part of myself or anybody else who'd be on the committee to fundraise this. Yeah, I mean, this is a very big idea. But I mean, you know, like Jean talked about, you know, you've got to think big. You've just got to get whittled down. Think big. You know, the idea of teaching kids to swim, the idea of Otter Valley maybe being able to have a swimming pool. You know, the idea of us being able to be the only pool in the area that's open, that'd be an indoor pool that people would be able to access. I mean, this, you know... So thinking about that, you know, there could be opportunities to fundraise from corporate sources, from private donors. You know? Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to move us into our facilities discussion that we are continuing from October 20th. I really don't care what order we go in, but there were three things that we were talking about. One was the cost-benefit analysis of giving Sudbury... The Sudbury Building to the Special Education Department to have a office space and...
Alternative program.
Thank you. And then there's also the update on the Lester modular building and then the middle school model. So I'll leave it to you guys which one you'd like to discuss first. Yes, Barry?
Can I discuss something else? I just, this afternoon, looked at... Took your suggestion. I look at the PEG TV of the October meeting because unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there. And in looking at that, a couple of things jumped out at me that I'd kind of like to share. One is, there were some great presentations by Kristen and Allison, and Brenda spoke very well, and Greg spoke to the middle school as well. But the meeting was really all over the place as far as content, and it really brought me back to the 18 months I spent on that task team. And that took 18 months because it was big and it was broad, and it was all over the place. And a lot of the things that were talked about kind of exacerbated other problems. So it was very difficult to hone in on where we were going. I think that as we look at these particular things and I look at the discussions of that meeting, there's a process. There is a science to problem-solving, and I did it for a living, so I'm very familiar with it. And it's called the Demaeic Process of Six Sigma. And it's basically define, measure, analyze, improve, and control. And it's successful with every single effort, whether it's a process or a problem or a project. In this particular case, what I heard in that meeting was a lot of discussion around the improve phase of that. That was like the natural content of the discussion. Well, why don't we do this? Or why don't we do that? And what about this? And what about that? But it was halfway through the meeting, there was still a lot of confusion around what was the problem? I mean, what was the most immediate problem we were trying to solve as a group, as a team? And people were surprised. Some people were surprised to hear that, you know, maybe the OCA thing was at the level it was at. And I think that in these meetings, unlike the task team, which is a little bit more focused and the term of the focus is more immediate than the task team was, I would really like to see us define, maybe take some time and analyze and define, what is the most immediate critical need that we need to focus on facility-wise as a group? And that could be because it's the magnitude of it, the severity of it, the timeline of it, the impact of it, whatever criteria we use to determine it's the most immediate need to focus on. Define what that is, kind of measure again. It's the natural flow of things. Measure, how bad is that problem? What's the impact of it? How much does it need to improve to actually no longer be a problem? Talk about those things. And then analyze, what are the variables that are preventing us from fixing it, causing it to worsen, whatever it may be? And then talk about the improve piece. You know, what are the suggestions we can have? Angela talked about we're just throwing darts on the wall. Terrific. That's an actual method of brainstorming the improve phase of that focus. But a lot of what that meeting was about was people were just talking about, well, maybe this. Well, maybe we move everybody to Nashouby, or maybe we do this, maybe we do that. But there was no real definition of the problem we were focusing on. So I would like to see us, rather than address the middle school model or whatever other things you had on your list, let's figure out what is the thing we're trying to... What's the most immediate critical thing we're trying to fix? And then focus on that. Once that's resolved, then you go to what's the next most immediate thing now that that one's off the table. Just my thoughts.
Well, I think the most immediate need or fix... We did have that discussion. We said that, you know, the Sudbury School's empty. That's one issue. We don't have enough space. That was another issue. What else did we have? Somebody help me. It was building... Too many buildings. Not enough space.
We did talk about...
But even in that conversation, Angela, I remember, you go back a meeting or two, and I love Marcia. She's tremendous. But I tried to ask a question when we were at the Sudbury School meeting, and I probably didn't articulate it well because I could tell she didn't understand what I was trying to determine. But in the discussions we had along the way, I was never really sure. Was Marcia's proposal a solution to the Sudbury School being empty? Or was Marcia's... Was the Sudbury School being empty a solution to Martha's problem? Uh, Marcia's problem? I was never sure which was which. And I tried to ask that question, and I didn't say it very well, and I didn't get the answer I needed. But I almost felt as though someone months ago threw out that our biggest problem right now is the fact that Sudbury School is empty. And then Marcia came forward in her team with, hey, perhaps this is a solution. But I never felt as though Marcia's proposal was truly identifying a problem that she had within her domain. She was rather offering her area as a solution for the Sudbury School being vacant. That's what I had felt all along. So we spent a lot of conversation around that. And then as the meeting went on, it became more apparent that people really felt as though the OCA problem was the most immediate and biggest problem. And to me, that meant, okay, great. If we agree to that, and Marcia's answer needs to be now, then maybe her time isn't now. And the OCA problem is now, and then maybe Marcia's proposal is next year. That's kind of the way I looked at the way the conversation was going. I love Bill Moore as well, but as soon as someone jingles money in front of you, all of a sudden, now it's the most immediate focus you have, and it isn't the most immediate problem you have.
We got... Why are you jingling in front of us?
Well, he said we'll get municipal share of funding. And then there's a lot of interest in it. But is the gymnasium the most immediate problem we have? I don't think it is. That being said, unless I feel personally, and I... If no one cares to feel the way I do, I'm fine with that, too. But unless we really hone in on fixing the most immediate problem in the district today, we'll be 18 months again, and I won't be here by then, and we still won't have any solutions. Hopefully, we won't be fighting a pandemic all that way, but...
I'll take a stab at defining it your way, Barry, and say that our most immediate problem is doing something that the voters will support, which would rule out the super campus immediately. We can take two seconds for that. And if we think about what we can present to the voters that's going to generate support and pass and widespread support, that's going to help define our discussion quite a bit.
I'd be curious to know, too, have the needs shifted? I mean, we did a lot of work. And I know that the specific ask for last facility meeting was to revisit the middle school because some of the board members weren't part of that process. So that's why people spoke specific to the middle school at the last meeting. But I guess the other way to approach this would be, we spent 18 months as a task force. Have the problems or the issue shifted, the needs shifted, in light of the current sort of landscape where we find ourselves now? Or, I mean, if it hasn't much, then a lot of that work may still be applicable. So I guess that that would be the only add or the value add here, based on, you know, what we worked on for that length of time.
Angela?
So maybe we spend our time identifying what our problems are and then put them in order of severity. And then from there, we discuss whatever... What's the next step? I forget what you said.
Yeah.
It doesn't jump to... Oh, then you do measurements.
Yeah.
And then, not that we have to actually do that process, because I think we have to do it faster than what a business would do it.
It's just a methodology.
But the methodology, yeah, is definitely... I think it makes sense. I think it would definitely organize us. I think if we actually say, all right, what does the school board actually feel is our immediate issues now? Put them in order of severity, and then start figuring out how to solve those problems.
Can I just ask, too? Would it be the board that's identifying those issues, or is it like, you know? I'm not... I'm just asking. I mean, is it... I mean, to me, it's something Brenda would be involved. You know, I mean, there's...
Well, I think a lot of people would be involved in it.
A lot of people would be involved.
But the board definitely has to have that discussion.
Needs... Well, I think the board needs the focus. And I think a lot of people would be involved in the conversation.
Part of the measurement is having... Bringing everybody in to say, hey, you know, here's our data to spark... Is this really as severe as what the board thinks it is? Or should it go down a couple of levels and something else should be higher up in the chain?
Right. Which is what we did for 18 months. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what it is for that gap.
I think you're right, though. I think it's a little different than what it was 18 months ago.
I think the landscape has changed, Allison, with respect to the demographics and the capacity. It sounds... At least it sounded that way to me, listening to the October meeting. And it sounded as though the greatest impact on that...
Yes.
...element was OCA. I could be wrong. That's just what I heard. And not to diminish at all the task team or the middle school option, but I always kind of viewed that, and Greg kind of spoke to it, I think, in the October meeting, as though that would be like a solution that would fix a lot of problems, that would be like a next-level solution. And his comment was that, jeez, if we had done that, we wouldn't be having these conversations today. However, I mean, we'd be foolish not to acknowledge the tremendous efforts that went into fighting a pandemic that killed 750,000 people. I mean, that was a year and a half of time, or almost two years of time, that we really were offline or off-focus.
And who's to say that we don't end up right back at that...
Right.
...at the middle school idea? I mean, it's... I don't think any of that work is not...
Well, Angela, I think when you say that, I agree with you 100%. If you could get to the point of saying, our most immediate problem is X.
X, Y, Z.
X, right? And how do we solve that immediacy of the X problem? Maybe there's interim solutions to the immediacy of the X problem to where it can sustain itself until the next solution comes available. That's all I was trying to point out. And now I'll surrender the floor.
Much pleasure. Yep?
My recollection of the conversation at the last meeting, I agree with you, Barry, that it sounded to me, as the discussion unfolded and we had to stop our meeting, it sounded that the AOC issues were really the ones that were the priority need in terms of the Lester Building and then trying to figure out how the Sudbury facility fit in with helping to solve the needs that were there. And I think we were at a point of... of somebody had thrown out the idea of using the Sudbury facility for some student classroom space to help relieve the Lester crowding problem. And I think we were leaning towards a primary unit because the facility is already structurally designed for that versus an older population. And with the variables and the needs of the, of a primary population, it's more suited towards that. So in my mind, that was kind of where the discussion was going, and then we had to stop. I don't know what would have been next, but we're going to find out. So as much as I'm an advocate for, you know, Marcia's proposal of having some kind of trauma-based support system in our district, we need that option in our, in our continuum of services that we need to have available.
And I think the other thing that I remember Marcia saying towards the end of that meeting was, I think you had asked the question, Lori, you know, how much of a commitment in years do we need to give you to make this work? And I think her answer was, if you're not solid on it for a multi-year solution, then I'd rather not go there. I think something to that effect.
That is what she said.
That is exactly what I said, Barry.
Okay, Marcia.
I also can answer your question, Barry. I didn't understand it that evening.
That was my fault, Marcia.
Oh, no, that's okay, it's hard. You know, I think hybrid meetings are hard. And I'm, you know, I've been doing the business for so long, sometimes I don't articulate it deeply enough for other people to understand because I know it in my own head. I think that I'm a very, a person who's solution-driven and also takes advantage of opportunities. So Sudbury presented both, their special services. So when a building is empty, I will take advantage of an opportunity, and I will look for a solution. So we do know our office space is inadequate, and we do know we had money to do some renovation. So it was both things, Barry. But you need to know that philosophically and educationally, I would always support the need for a school like Lester if it needs the building. And I would never compete in my own district for space. And I would honor anything the board does, and certainly appreciate Tom's dilemma at Lester. So again, a solution and an opportunity. It's not a necessity.
And as I recall, Marcia, if you didn't have Sudbury, you still have the problem of what you need to do for kids, but you would look for other solutions.
I will look for other solutions, and I will find other opportunities, and I will commit myself to solving all of our concerns, even if I don't have Sudbury.
Well, I'd like to just second everything that Derek just said. I think he put his finger on the immediate problem and defined what our discussion needs to be about tonight. At least the first part of it.
Okay, so do we start there? Do we start with OCA and their space issues? And when we talk about OCA, we're also talking about Sudbury at the same time because they are all part of the same campus.
Can we just go over like the space issues? Let's go over like what needs to be done there, that needs to.
Sure, so the space issues are that there are lots of extra support staff at Lester, and they don't have any of their own space. The principal's office is also being used for other offices. Thank you, guidance. And so there's no place for.
For support services. It's, the school is, you know, when we brought Sudbury back into Lester, our numbers were about sixty kids, roughly sixty, sixty-five. This year, we're closer to eighty, which is fine. We have the same number of classrooms being used, so those kids are absorbed. But there's no place for any of the support services. So we're doing support services in truly closets. There's not even a lot of closets there. Multiple people in single offices. The modular unit was going to be a way to relieve some of that support. And Lester, while the numbers of students are low, it's at the same time our highest free and reduced lunch population. And they need the support service, academic interventionist, SLP. We added a guidance counselor there, we added a school nurse there. They never had their own full-time of either of those, a part-time librarian, which means a library as well. So for Lester to be a fully functioning school that came with support services. If, I don't know if you want me to go on?
Again?
No, go ahead.
If, so one of the ideas that came up last meeting is, should you move, and I agree, it would be primary back over to Sudbury, which would come with another discussion about what would it take to do that? Because this district has a history of a single principal doing multiple buildings, and that has not worked. And Tom's the most recent example of having lived that, where he came to the board a couple of years ago and said, this is, I'm never in the right building at the right time. I'm either in my car between two buildings when there's a crisis in one building or the other building. Or, you know, if a school has 20% of my population, does that mean I spend 20% of my time there? But that's where the needs are. And so you really need a dedicated administrative support as well for the two buildings. So that just needs to be factored in.
So has there never been a discussion of having an assistant principal? Where if one's at one school, you have another one at another?
What you've done traditionally.
To that effect?
Yeah, traditionally, what you've done is you've taken, you by, I mean, Otter Valley District has taken, and even the Sudbury and Lester districts before that. They took a teacher and gave them a stipend to be the de facto administrator when the administrator isn't there. And we've done that for at least my eight years here, and I know it was before that. So I think Laura Coro's probably done it for almost her entire career here. But that still isn't the same as having the administrator there. So she might be the first line of defense, but she'd have to call the principal, who now needs to leave whatever school and go and deal with the other.
She needs, she still needs to teach, so.
And she still needs to teach.
Hard to have all of those hats.
Yeah, so yeah, it could be an assistant principal. We even thought that maybe the guidance counselor, if Tom and the guidance counselor were in two places, maybe, you know, but that, that isn't the way the kids work. The kids don't schedule when they have a crisis. Unfortunately, if we could get them to do that, then it'd be great. But it just doesn't work that way. Tom's already still overseeing the whiting pre-K. And we still provide services to that because we have pre-K, two pre-K classrooms in there. So there's still a little bit of that, but with the childcare center upstairs, it helps a little bit there. So just if, if, you know, if you, if you go down that path, just recognize that we would be strongly advocating for, whether it's an assistant principal.
So what's the capacity that could be at Sudbury?
Two to three classrooms there.
Yeah.
There's two closed classrooms, one open classroom there. So that's not a huge capacity.
Thirty to forty-five? Thirty to forty-five kids?
Yeah.
The other issue.
What about the sensitivity?
Well, there's also the issue that we will hear from parents who are not going to want their kids separated.
Okay.
So just realize, you know, especially in two separate schools. So we need to be prepared for that.
And the population can flex again. I mean, you, I don't have any more of a crystal ball than you do. Generally, our enrollment has been staying steady, in the state, it's going down. So you could end up in two years from now back at sixty kids. And then again, do you want to spend money on two buildings or come back to one building?
Lori, back to the pieces that I'm still missing in my decision-making here is, have we really measured what is the magnitude of the problem at Lester right now? So we know, do any of these solutions resolve it? Brenda, I know you spoke to some degree at that October meeting around what the shortcomings were facility-wise. Could you maybe refresh my memory on that a little bit? Can I ask that, Lori?
You just did.
Okay.
So I was trying to find the floor plan to show you that again because I think that really highlights what we put into the proposed floor plan for the modular unit is exactly what we're missing in the school. And so while shifting grades to use Sudbury would alleviate some of it, it will not solve all of the issues at Lester. There are still some issues, it certainly makes them less. And there are still some issues with bathroom facilities, nurse facilities, ventilation, and maybe still some space issues. Hard for me to tell, and it depends on which grades go. So I don't know if that answers your question. And just another reminder, as you said, Lori, you're splitting families. They have to do that at some point when they go on to middle school as well. But it is in the younger grades, and that is usually not something people are excited about. We would be splitting staff. And when you split staff, and you have essentially a six-hour education day, maybe a six-and-a-half-hour education day, and you lose a half an hour of instruction that staff are using to travel, that's challenging. It makes it really hard to provide a lot of staff that need to go between the buildings.
Well, Brenda, if the proposed modular space, does it resolve those shortcomings? I know it was like twenty by fifty-two or something. Does it resolve those needs that exist?
It resolves the needs for the short term.
And how short is that term?
Well, part of the short term was board-inflicted, and I respect it because aesthetically, a trailer isn't beautiful. So the board really was very clear that they wanted to see the trailer be, you know, I think you said, as little length of time as possible until a better solution is found. The other issues that Lester has that we can't ignore.
But to my question, if it were to remain there, if the board's request to have it removed didn't exist, and the modular solution were to remain there, with respect to this problem, how long would that solve the problem?
So I'm going to go out on a limb and tell you my opinion, and then ask Tom to chime in as well from his point of view. From my point of view, it would solve all of your space issues.
At Lester.
At Lester. The other two issues that still exist, and one we have to solve anyways, and we're in the process of doing that, and that is the water issue. So whether there's a trailer or not a trailer, that's going to have to be resolved. And then the other one is, you know, that what-if, which can happen at any time without notice, and that is if we ever have an issue with the septic system.
So the conversation in the October meeting around the next phase that will include in addition to Lester, wouldn't be necessary if the modular unit were to remain?
Well, that's, I guess that's what he's getting at. How many years can you get out of the modular?
Oh, you can get twenty plus.
That was my question. Again, see, Marcia, this is why I don't get good answers, because I don't ask good questions.
Just be direct.
Right.
How many years?
Yeah, twenty plus.
Twenty plus, yeah.
Twenty plus, and it still has value.
There's still, it's a stick-built modular, it's, it's just, you can move it.
But size-wise, it meets the need for the foreseeable future?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, and last, Tom, you want to chime in that I'm not correct?
He gave you a thumbs up.
Thank you, usual, Brenda, you are correct. I would just happily point out that actually we have enrolled several new children, not new children, but several new students in the last few weeks. So we're actually in the upper eighties now with our K through six population at Lester. In my humble opinion, in debating with sending some of them back, and I do agree that it would best be the primary grades because I just know that with adolescents being who they are, I want to be as close to them as possible. And when they were all the way down at Sudbury, that seemed to work out probably less beneficially than the younger students being there. So I learned a lot from my rebuilding job some a couple of years ago. I would point out that if it came down to Sudbury, the modular, the modular would pretty much solve what our present space needs. And its added value is that it keeps everybody under the same roof and not split up families, older brothers and younger brothers and sisters, et cetera. Siblings are all together. Also, it cuts down, as has been mentioned, on the travel time for me, for the nurse, for the guidance person. And one of the benefits of the modular was that it also included intervention space. And if we separate two buildings, we need two of everything rather than one. So if we, if we brought three classes down to Sudbury, classroom-wise, that would work, but we would also need separate intervention space for them, a separate library, et cetera. Whereas if they were in the modular, and I joked with Jeannie recently because in a previous district in which we both worked, there was a modular that stayed on the end of my building for actually forty-five years until a bond actually made the addition more permanent. And that was stretching it, but it actually was still a pretty good quality. So anyway, it's definitely two of everything in two different buildings. You know, there'd be an efficiency in terms of everybody under one roof and not having to build in, you know, commute time. We've turned a lot of the commute time into actual more instructional time. We offer more PE than is the state minimum because of that, and more intervention time as well. So I would highly favor the modular versus sending any group of students down to Sudbury because I think it would economize a lot of things and create a cohesive, you know, building community.
Angela?
I would also like to suggest that, and Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you said that if your, your idea of bringing the kids over, or bringing the kids back into district would save us money, correct?
It does, yes.
So if, so if we save money by bringing these kids back into the district, that would pay for the modular, well, it would be.
We'd have the money for the modular.
We'd have the money for the modular, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lot of money out of our pocket, and we wouldn't have to come up with.
Saving money in the long run.
So that's a measurement.
You can't use special ed dollar reimbursements to pay for modules.
Understood.
No, not special ed.
It's a big trial, though, Angela, it's a big trial.
Yeah. No, but we have Escher funds for the modular, and special ed would have a savings, two different statements.
Eric?
Is there, is there a temporary solution in surviving with the status quo until we can acquire the modulars?
We actually started that conversation this week. You know, especially as it's getting cold, and we can't really send the kids outside quite as much for PE and some of those things. We are wondering if we need to talk to the town about, you know, one of the buildings nearby, which we don't think will be successful, we don't know. We're hurting.
Yeah.
Especially, I didn't realize, Tom, that Tom's out there in the street corner recruiting kids. That's great.
If I may also add one other point. Based on just the changing needs of our community and the growing stress that all kids are under, especially kids who have lived in, you know, trauma environments, Marcia's proposal for Sudbury, I'm sure, and there would be a distinct process for, you know, enrolling students in that program on an as-needed basis and for as long as they need it. But I'm not being facetious in to say that I think I and my elementary colleagues would well fill that up. We are, you know, in addition to space needs, would be our second biggest need. Our highest need is dealing with children who have pretty significant trauma backgrounds. And I would have to think that Sudbury environment for kids across the supervisory union would be highly needed and would benefit the whole school community. In other words, we'd fill it right up.
There is the issue of how long it's going to take to get a modular, correct, Brenda?
Yeah.
I think that's the other thing we need to be cognitive of. We didn't even get anyone to bid when we put it out to bid, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we're ready to go out to bid again. They told us that the earliest that they would be able to look at anything in regards to filling the bid would be January or February. And that doesn't work in Vermont because you need a concrete pad to put it on. So we are hopeful. So we are hopeful. And I did not put it out to bid after the last meeting because I wanted to make sure that you still wanted me to go down this path. But we are hopeful that we would get bids, and realistically, we would put it in in the summer, early summer.
To get back to the facilities themselves, we've gotten a lot of sort of dribs and drabs of bad news about Lester. You know, the parking issue with the town, potential septic problem, the bathrooms failing with the loss of the electric power for an hour. So my question is, what's the life left in the building?
Life left in the current Lester building?
Yes.
It all depends on how much you want to invest in it. I mean, the building is fine. It's too small for your current population. As Brenda said, the only, the septic issue could be an issue at any time, is not right now. That's the ticking time bomb, but it has been a ticking time bomb.
I was going to say, I've been here 15 years. It's been a ticking time bomb for 15 years.
And we've been talking about it that whole 15, right? So...
I think the water, there was also another issue that we really need to think about because, I mean, they were doing other test wells, and we won't know the results of those for a while. But if that one vein that they're going to seal off all of a sudden becomes contaminated, that's an issue, a very big issue. And to spend the amount of money that I saw in the report on a modular unit that we might have to no longer use, even though it's free money, where we might be able to use it somewhere else. And I don't, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't put a modular at Lester. I just wanted to revisit it because it was supposed to be here in September, and now all of a sudden, we're a year out, and they're going without, and they do have space issues. And, you know, what makes the most sense for that school? Those students?
I think you and Kevin both had pretty valid concerns around facilities within the site. But I also think, and I said it before, hopefully, we can return our focuses again, you know, to what we normally would, and this past two years of focus around a pandemic will subside. And perhaps, if our interim solution for OCA can sustain itself long enough, to Allison's point, we can refocus then on, you know, what is the middle school solution? Or what's like the next, like the five-year plan solution? And what does that alleviate for us? I mean, in honesty, in the last two years, we haven't been able to do that.
Bill, you had your hand raised.
The thing with modulars is that you pay me now and you also pay me later. We had four modulars at Otter Valley, which probably were, nobody here was at that time. But they leaked, they had mold, you had to go outside to go from one to the other. It was really not a pleasant experience. And I think one of the finer, they should have seen the bulldozer go in to take the things out. They just were not very good, and their longevity was not there. We thought that they would last for five years, but they ended up at 25 years or some such number. And simply trying to patch it up is constantly having to chase it. So I'm not really enamored of that, of mobiles as being a very good solution.
But as opposed to construction or addition, I'm sorry?
Sorry. Eric, you had your hand raised.
I was at Otter Valley during the mobile annex as Bill is talking about. That's what we called them. And yeah, they were pretty lousy. But hopefully, the technology has improved since then. I mean, that was 30 years ago. I'm hoping they're better now, but yeah, they were, it wasn't comfortable out there at all, especially in wintertime.
Barry, since you were talking, you're on Angela.
I apologize for interrupting, but my thought was to Bill's comment, yeah, it may not be the best solution. But I also noticed in looking at the meeting from October 30th, there was a lot of people stepping back when they heard the alternative would be, you know, in addition to the Lester building, which would probably be more risky, my only thought.
Angela?
I was just going to go off of what Eric said, but definitely the technology has come a long ways for modulars. They, I mean, businesses are using them all over the state now. They're, it's definitely a solution to some definite space issues where you don't have the money to bond or have the money to build on and add on to buildings. I think it should be our goal, though, as a board, to not let it sit around for 25 years and really focus on, you know, getting five or 10 years out of it and trying to figure out a long-term plan on what to do with Lester and all of our elementary schools, to be honest with you, and our middle school and our high school. So I think, like Barry said, if we focus on what the immediate need is right now and get us through, and then we say, all right, the next big item to tackle is our buildings and our room and our, you know, our growing population now, which was not a problem back when we did the study with the team. We were actually going down when we did that, now we're going up. So I think all of our plans and all of our studies that were done three, four years ago has completely changed. So I think if we did this modular to get us through for five, 10 years, the modular is still going to be in good shape. And we just make sure we don't take our foot off the gas to be able to figure out what our long-term solution will be.
I saw Mike first.
And I agree with that 100%. I think at times, what we tend to do is we fix the short-term problems, and then we just let it go until it becomes an issue again. I think, to your point, well said, we have to keep the foot on the pedal and make sure we're not losing sight of the long-term projects.
Bill?
What's our latest population projections? And do we have a bump or a bubble here that we're dealing with, or what?
I don't think we actually have a bubble. We've been staying pretty steady.
We're pretty steady. The bubble is moving through the high school right now.
Where's the bubble now?
Like, it's either eighth grade or ninth grade. I don't recall.
It's ninth grade.
It's in the high school. So, yeah, other than that, we are pretty steady.
But our kindergarten and stuff is big. That's growing.
Yeah, our kindergarten is big. We are a little uncertain of what our pre-K numbers will be coming up because COVID affected pre-K. Some parents just simply did not want to send their kids. And so our numbers are lower than usual in pre-K. But our trend in pre-K and what's been playing out in kindergarten is we're steady. So we've got three grades per class at Nashobee. We've got, we're probably going to one or two grades per class at Lothrup. Kind of depends on their kindergarten numbers. And Lester has a, one multi-age class that's going to bubble on through.
Yeah.
But the rest of the classes are single-grade. So we don't, you know, we don't have that blip right now coming up that we see.
If I could just add, Nashobee has returned to the student level that we had 10 years ago. So for those who've been here for a long time like myself, we've been steadily declining. We are now not only level, but growing slightly. And like I said, Nashobee is back to where they were 10 years ago.
And so is Lester getting to be with...
And Lester's getting more and more students. So the time of declining enrollments, I think we've capped out at that. And we're either staying or creeping. Not surging, but they're definitely steady.
But you said in Lothrup that that's going up too because you said that your space, your extra space is no longer going to be there because the younger students are going to fill it up.
Yeah, it's looking good at Lothrup.
We're definitely filling back up again.
Go ahead, Barbara.
In the expert opinions that are present and out there, is this seeming like a trend that will continue?
Very good question. Nobody knows. COVID messed everything up. Out-of-staters moving into the state with kids, you hear it in other districts. A lot of my colleagues, we don't have that particular problem, but I am hearing that. And yet, the state as a whole has been going down significantly. It's really unknown if this, you know, for our communities, we've been pretty steady for a while and have stopped going down. But statewide, we haven't. So it's not... And then, how many COVID babies are we going to have in the next, you know? Huge unknown.
Is there anyone online who wants to speak? Because I haven't grown... Allison, did you have something to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think, what I hear too is a lot of what we discussed as part of that task force is there's this conundrum of, okay, our facilities need to work. Work costs money. We're growing, we need to invest, but what does that investment look like? And from a communication standpoint, and to Angela's point, it can't really be knee-jerk. So that's what was tricky about the planning component. So I think that you guys are sort of on the right path to determine short-term. And that's similar to the trend that we set with the task force. What's our two, what's our five, what's our 10? And the reason for that is so that we could get community input, community engagement, and community buy-in when budget, time, and bonds and everything else sort of come to fruition, you know, so that we can plan that out. So I guess I just, and it's the same thing we sort of talked about round and round. That felt so hard for us to make any decisions as part of the task force because it was, you know, we had all the facility presentations, we had all the numbers. We had, and when you actually look at that, okay, so let's take Lester for an example. Say something happens with the water, does that building fold? Or do you invest in it because there's no other option? I mean, I guess I'm curious about that myself. Like, do you build the new school? No? I mean, what does, you know, I mean, what does that look like?
Oh, yeah.
Is there, you know, is there water or a septic issue at Lester?
We've always been waiting for that shoe to drop, and it's always been looming over us, but it hasn't happened. So...
But if it did, I guess if it did, what would that leave you with?
That's a good question.
Okay.
Bill, or Mary?
To kind of marry in with Allison's thought there, how do you communicate that? What does that look like, you know, to the user community? I think if we were to go down the road of change, no matter what that change is, hopefully, we've put good thought into the rationale for the change, and it's a good solution, and it satisfies the need, we should communicate that. And we should communicate that, that this is a solution to this problem, and it's expected to live for this amount of time. And that kind of sets the tone or sets the stage for the next level of discussion that says, keep in mind, you know, we're wrestling with these issues at this site, and we're hoping that in a five-to-10-year timeframe, we're looking at perhaps this for a solution. So it kind of flows, I think, if that makes sense. As long as we communicate, you know, that the change that we're implementing is a solution to a known problem. I mean, we can't make the problem go away without a solution. We're not magicians, so we need a solution. And this solution is intended to suffice for this amount of time. And the reason it can't be a long-term solution is because inherently, there's problems with the site that we don't really want to invest in long-term. And our better investment, to Allison's point, would be in a solution that we talked about through the task force. Just a thought. You know, we can kind of marry those two together, and we should. Because people are always cognizant of change, and they're always wondering, you know, why change? What was driving it? What is it buying me? And I think we ought to really communicate that whenever we implement change.
So were you saying, Barry, I kind of...
Yeah, I know, I talked in a circle again.
Well, so, I think what our problem is, is that all the things that are on our agenda are all intertwined, almost. And so when you talk about figuring out what's the most immediate problem, there, well, this problem feeds into this, and then this problem kind of feeds into this.
But they're not all on the same time space.
Maybe not. But the issue is, so you're talking about one of the task force, one of the things that came out of the task force was a middle school model. And so are you suggesting that we put the modular in at Lester knowing that we, the plan is, is that within the next five to 10 years, we might have a middle school, whether it's at Otter Valley or at a different location?
Yeah, I'm saying that I know this is open meeting, but I really believe transparency is our friend.
Sure.
And I really believe that as we make good rational decisions, we should communicate them if they involve some level of change. And the value you get out of that is you can kind of foreshadow with that change perhaps what your next focus was going to be. That's all I'm really saying. We kind of marry the two efforts together. We don't forget one for the other.
Sure.
We deal with the most immediate, but we use that as kind of a precursor of an information flow for people to see that it's not a forever solution and that, you know, there are other things we're going to have to wrestle with a few years down the road. Does that make sense? So I'm saying we can't be paralyzed by the analysis and not move forward on a solution. And we don't push away any efforts that were made into, you know, solutions that would have offset this need. We focus on both, but we focus on this one in its timepiece, and we focus on that one in its timepiece.
So I guess, oh, go ahead, Angela. Well, I'm just sitting here thinking while you're all talking. And if we're going to talk about things that need to be fixed now, obviously, Lester is probably the most immediate concern. Do we all agree on that? Okay. So knowing that we can't fix that without a temporary solution, we probably should just go ahead and do the modular. And then if we're going to do that, knowing that we've bought ourselves time for Lester, then we should give Marcia the chance to run her program at Sudbury. And knowing that we have only a few, that it's a temporary solution for the modular at Lester, because I do worry about the water issue even more than the sewer system. I think that we need to talk also, long-term, about the middle school model. And I know Derek has something that he wanted to bring up tonight. And so I'm curious as to if you want to hear that.
I don't know. If I could say yes or no, because I don't know what it is. You're kind of leaving us on a...
Just said, but can I ask you one thing?
Sure.
That you did say?
Yeah.
A little bit more depth on? When you went to, so we should communicate then to Marcia that she should perhaps go forward with her Sudbury option because we're discounting it as an option for the Lester situation? Have we discounted it completely? I guess I want to make sure that we have.
Well, I think if we have enough space with the modular...
But that can't happen until summer, maybe.
Well, true, but she's not going to have any kids in there until next year anyway. So I mean, that's, I don't, I mean, I know Marcia's good, but she ain't that good. So...
So to play devil's advocate a little bit. Say we go ahead with what you're proposing. What happens if the septic system does go? Then we have no place.
Well, that's not true. We probably do have, I mean, obviously, Lothrup has some still additional space. And if we have to move kids, we have to move kids. So, and if the septic system were to go before the end of the year, we're obviously going to use Sudbury in whatever capacity we can to help with that.
And Nashobee is...
You know, I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't come up with a solution for every single thing that might happen. But since we've talked about the septic system for the last 20 years and it's still...
Well, Murphy's Law.
Doing okay.
There's wood on the floor.
They still bringing bottled water to Lester?
I know. Well, I got my soda. That's about, that's my bottled water. Anyway.
Laurie, I'm sorry. The one thing that will be extremely important is that if we invest the money and change Sudbury into offices and special services, it would be extremely hard to accept that in two years or three years, we get escalated.
We would not ask you to leave. I just...
I'm just gonna put that out.
Yeah, I know. Because I know what you had said at the last meeting. So, and we wouldn't kick you out. Especially if your program is as needed as what everyone is saying it's needed, then it would be stupid to kick you out when it's doing such a great service for our kids. So I really think you should hear what Derek wants to talk about tonight.
I want to comment on what you just said first, though. You proposed a kind of sweeping three-step proposal. But it doesn't follow that if we do step one, that step two is necessarily...
Oh, that's true. I'm just throwing it out there, Kevin.
Yeah, so I just want to, I just want to make the point that I don't think we should say, okay, here's the grand plan, without discussing the different ideas implicitly.
Absolutely, but I mean, I mean, I'm just throwing out an idea. You can murder it all you want. So, and then I think you should hear about what Derek's thought is. I think we should think about investing a little bit of money into it, which is also another figure, grander scheme option. Are you okay with that? And I don't want to take his thunder, so that's why I'm asking if you listen to Derek.
Is it part of our facilities discussion?
It sure is.
It's a facilities discussion. At risk of moving away from the priority of Lester to talk about the middle school issues that were raised with the task force, and then the subsequent investigation into the feasibility of a super campus or a super facility at OV, I would like to ask the board to spend a small amount of money to investigate the viability or have a viability study done on the possibility of a middle school campus on the 44-acre parcel at the Caverly property in Pittsburgh. There's some maps here to look at. And no doubt that there's a lot of issues and questions that may come from that. But given that we own a 44-acre parcel that borders the Pittsburgh Rec area and off of Plains Road.
And it's pretty central. It's also very central.
It's very central. It's...
That tan area?
It's the tan area of that map. But in terms of looking at that property, in terms of what would be available there, what would work there for a six-through-eight school, you know, it would create a gymnasium for the town of Pittsburgh. It would, it would offer, you know, it would offer Pittsburgh to be a significant part of the alliance of our six towns. And it would save the fields and some of the other cost factors of trying to accomplish a middle school on the OV campus. So just a feasibility, look at it. Is it possible? Is there something?
Back up a little when you said it's central, central to...
Well, so Otter Valley is pretty much central to all of our schools.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, because I've asked people in the past when they're, who are still around to remember when they're building Otter Valley, and that was a compromise, to put it where that was, because that was considered the most central location that was almost on the Pittsburgh border. So, and the other towns weren't coming so far. That was more looked at something. You're pushing that out another 10 more miles.
Yeah, well, just for...
I understand 10 miles is 10 miles, but it's 10 miles from Brandon. It's 20 miles from...
That's one of the details.
Not 10 miles.
That's one of those detailed discussions that are gonna come out.
Yeah.
That people have. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at it.
Sure, I agree, but that's where you're gonna get most of the pushback.
Well, there'll be all kinds of pushback, and you can look at models of area towns that have done similar things. Middlebury made a decision to move their middle school off-campus. And they went through all, a lot of those discussions to figure that out. And I think, I worked at that school for 10 years, and I think it was a very viable option, and still is, to have a middle school, and they've gone now six-through-eight, to have a middle school off-campus. And it seems to be workable. So, you know, there are things to look at. There were some significant challenges with the feasibility study of looking at a middle school on the OV campus. So I just looked at that property in Pittsburgh and said, maybe that one is an option. And we should look at it and see what the feasibility is, what are the pros and cons there. So I'd like to make a motion that we investigate or invest in a viability study on that property.
Anyone want a second? Oh, yeah, and you have to put some money, attach some money to it.
I'm not sure what's reasonable in terms of a limitation of funding. Brenda?
I would say 20,000.
Not to exceed 20,000, up to 20,000.
A second?
You have a second?
Look at that.
Okay, so the question, so does anybody have any other questions?
I do.
Okay, go for it.
Derek, would that proposal be basically to relook, you know, change directions and relook at another site for the same specification of work that was given to the Otter Valley site?
I believe that the work of the task force, much of it is still valid.
But you're not looking to revise that proposal in any way. You're just looking to relocate it?
Maybe with the exception that we recommended you go six-to-eight, not five-to-eight.
And would we have to do another feasibility study for the location at Otter Valley campus?
I don't think so.
I guess that was my only question.
Yeah, just so we have some comparables, a comparison in terms of feasibility of the OV campus versus an alternate site.
So this has come out of left field for me a little bit. Could you explain the logic of why you chose that site? I guess it's just because the school board owns it, or...
I took a walk behind the Caverly building and discovered that there was a lot of property there, and I didn't know how much we owned, so I enquired. And the answer was 44 acres, and here's the map. And I said, well, this could be a possible middle school site. That's all. I mean, I don't have any hidden agendas or...
Oh, no, I'm not trying to imply that. I'm just wondering, as opposed to other spots?
No, it's just that we own that property.
Okay.
And why not utilize it if it's feasible?
Um, Bill? What?
Do you have a map up there?
There was...
We just took it down. We can put it back up.
There was a map.
So I'm gonna let Bill ask his question. Well, I'm gonna let Angela go, and then when the map goes back up, you can ask her a question. How's that? Okay. Go ahead, Angela.
Just, I think, I second your worry about being so far south of our district. But the other thing, on the positive side, is the power's already there, correct? It's not like Otter Valley where you gotta go all the way to the back fields and bring power all the way down there.
That's what the study...
Caverly's already there with power.
Well, it depends on deciding. I don't know.
Depends on where it is.
As a feasibility question, that's what we want to find out.
Is there water and sewer there? A town water and sewer?
Town water and sewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's another.
So, so I think, I think money wa, it's 20, 20,000 is ouch. But I think, I think it would be our due diligence to, if we do own, you know, knowing that we own that piece of property, and it could potentially be cheaper in the long run to build on that site. That's what I, this is just my internal thinking. I think it would be worth at least doing the feasibility study to say, give us comparables to say, all right, Otter Valley site would cost us X amount of money.
Yeah.
If we did it, you know, 10 miles south, which is not, you know, the greatest for location, but it'll save us X amount of money, I think that would be a positive.
It also keeps the kids separate, which is one thing that parents were worried about.
So there is some marketing things that we could do with that, if it truly panned out to be that way. But if the feasibility study came back and it was the same or more, then we would know where we stood.
Like you said, it's due diligence. You know, we would be remiss not to at least look into it.
So is the proposal to do this as a concurrent effort with the focus on OCA and Sudbury?
Yes.
Not a sequential one?
Yes, it's a separate.
But you want to go off and do this in preparation for some future discussion?
Long-term, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I think Brenda had something to add.
So I just want to let you know a couple of things. The $20,000 is a guess. And you know me. If I don't need to spend that, we're not going to. The other thing that I think it does is it gives you some good information on that land that you may not use today, tomorrow, or five years from now, but becomes more knowledge that we have on what the capabilities or the opportunities are for the place.
You say things so much better than I do.
How about them, Bill? Oh, yeah?
Okay, so Bill, no, I'm right. Bill, did you, what was your question?
I think he just wanted to see the...
Oh, you just wanted to see that. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you had a question. No.
So what is that road right there? That's not seven.
Plains Road is the large road.
So it's the one that goes...
Yeah, where the town offices.
By the dollar store, our new dollar store. Is this helpful, Angela?
Ready for a vote?
The haunted house, yeah.
No, because Ann...
Right. We used to own the haunted house. We sold the haunted house.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Sorry. Natalie has a question. Natalie.
Oh, no.
So I have a comment, really. I feel like we are getting ahead of ourselves. And I would hate to do a feasibility analysis in a single bubble. I feel like we need to do an alternatives analysis, which includes all of the different areas that we're considering and that lists the pros and cons of each, so that we can do it all at once. I feel like when we get this information piecemeal, it's not very helpful.
So the task force, I will tell you, Natalie, that the task force did that with many, many sites, but we never looked at Caverly.
Okay.
So we kind of actually already did that.
So it would be adding this to the, to the project that was already done.
Right.
So can it be an amendment to the project, you know, additional information added to what's already been done?
Sure.
Was there a reason the task force didn't look at this property?
I think we didn't realize that we owned 44 acres. We owned a haunted house at one point, which we transferred for the 44 acres.
I'm just trying to think of why we didn't look at it.
We didn't know that we owned a haunted house until Act 46, so, you know.
I knew that.
We didn't even...
You knew that, did you?
Yeah, to bring the history, we sold the haunted house, but was given the 44 because of...
No, we sold, we gave them the haunted house so we could have a school.
Right, the school wasn't there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We traded the school.
Which but gave us the 44 acres also.
We already had that.
Oh, we already had that? Well, then, we just didn't know we had it.
Nobody thought about it.
We would need 20 months for that.
Yeah. Derek missed that meeting.
I know, yeah, so. So, any other questions? So we do have a motion on the floor. Derek is asking that we appropriate up to $20,000 for a feasibility study of the Caverly land for a potential middle school building. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put your hands up, because you all did that weird. Oh, it's unanimous. Well, holy heck. Okay, thank you for that. I thought it was gonna be contentious. All right, so there we go. So feasibility study underway.
So do, since we...
Have we finished the discussion?
I was gonna say, since we've got 10 minutes left, can I, can I make a motion? Or do we need a motion?
For what?
For the... For the modular and for Marcia.
I'd like to finish that conversation.
So let's talk about the modular next. Okay, go for it.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how to say it, but I'm gonna make a motion that we add the, whatever the size of the modular...
52 by 24.
52 by 24 modular at Lester's site, and we provide Marcia the opportunity to...
I think you should make those two separate motions.
Okay, I'll do it separate.
I'm not sure you need to make the motion, because you already did.
Right, we already have the motion for the...
You can just say Brenda, go for it.
We authorized Brenda to go for it.
Reauthorize her.
Reauthorize.
Right, because we already made the authorization for the...
Okay, can we just have our hands to say, Brenda, go for it?
Sure. So those that still want Brenda to go for it on the modular, raise your hand.
Wait a minute. I wanted to get back, Derek kind of interrupted the discussion of the water system. And I just want to point out, it's a bad logical fallacy to say, well, we've been, things have been great for 20 years, so therefore, we can assume there's another 20 years of things going. I'll tell you a little brief story. I used to teach a class in the history of Burlington. And we brought the water guy in one day to talk about the water system in Burlington, which goes back to 1869. And he said, everything's held together with string and paper clips, and there are only two of us in the city that know how everything works. And if we got run over by a truck while we were over manhole cover, the city of Burlington would fall apart. And every year, I go to the city council in Burlington and say, we need millions and millions of dollars for our water system. And every year, they say, oh, my toilet flushes, you know, we can put it off for a while. That's what we're doing here. We, if we're gonna talk about facility studies and learning what we've got, we should concentrate on understanding the building we've got 80 of our children in and try to get some kind of grasp on what the future of that building is. We haven't done that. I haven't heard that from anybody tonight.
We have before, before you were on the board.
Okay, well, that's information I need that I haven't got. Because, you know, it's like we're dancing on a cliff edge and saying, well, you know, there's never gonna be an earthquake. There's never gonna be a rainstorm that makes the cliff, you know. That's, that's, that's really bad thinking. And it's, it should be unacceptable to us to say, well, you know, things have been okay so far, so we'll just kind of go along with what we've got.
Okay, Bill?
I follow your logic, and I agree with it. But at the same time, I'm asking what kind of plan is on the table that would solve the problem in a more permanent fashion?
He said, so can you say that again for sure? So he said that he agreed it...
I agree with Kevin's logic, but at the same time, I'm saying...
Yeah, you have another...
Well, you have a space issue that needs to be handled, and we cannot fix that space issue quickly or harmoniously.
We have five months to come up with a solution.
And that's why I kind of agree with, let's put the Band-Aid on what we can. But let's keep our foot on the pedal and keep moving forward and not lose sight of...
So I moved to amend the motion then, to include a study for a long-term plan about what the solution will be in Lester. Otherwise, we put the Band-Aid on it, and we walked away from it.
Well, you'd have to get someone, you'd have to talk to the person who made the motion. Actually, the motion would have been way long time ago.
It's gonna happen either way. If we're...
On that, though?
Uh, wait.
Go ahead, Angela. I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, it's gonna ha, I was gonna say what he did in that, you know, we have an immediate need this year that has to be solved before next year. So unless there's another solution that can be presented tonight that we can think about and discuss and go in that direction, we have to make a decision tonight to fix this Band-Aid. But I, I think we all as a board, minus me, because I won't be here, but I think you guys all are gonna, gonna keep moving forward on trying to solve the future needs of Lester and answer the question of what happens if the water fails? What happens if the sewer fails? What is our, our solution to Lester?
What is our, our solution to, to Lester? Do we, there's many different things, paths to go down to, to discuss, but it's not something that we have time to tonight, so.
Well, as long as it's clear that this is a Band-Aid and we're not calling it surgery.
Yeah. I hear, I hear your caution that we should not throw good money after bad, you know.
Amendment to the motion on the floor, it does not yet have a second.
That's true.
Second.
Because we told, we were said that we don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
It's already been made, but you just need to say, yea, your name.
The decision to do the modular.
Yeah, wait a minute, stop.
If I hear Kevin's amendment to the motion, it is conclusive. It is to do, go ahead with the removal and while doing a long-range plan, because we realize that this is temporary.
That's correct.
So, there isn't any real harm in continuing to look at things, and in fact, we should.
So, there's no motion he's amending.
Angela's?
No, the mo... Well, so, no, no.
Angela's wasn't, Angela's wasn't a motion, because the motion happened...
Weeks ago, months ago.
Long, long time ago, where we've already given authority for her, for Brenda to look into it.
Right.
So, that's already happened.
Wait a minute. So, and the issue is, is that in order to make an amendment like that, you'd have to talk to the person who made the, the motion originally, and I do not know who that is.
Okay.
Okay, then...
So, that, but I agree with you, Kevin, that we need to keep our foot on the gas and make sure that we don't just let this...
So, what are we about to vote on if there's no motion?
Well, we're not really...
Not really voting, we're just...
We're not really voting. We're just telling Brenda that, yes, we want to move, or no, we don't.
But there is a second motion you were gonna make.
Yes, there is a second motion.
I haven't made it that way.
There was a second motion. I've lost it.
Well, it hasn't been made yet.
We don't need to vote on the original motion, because we waved our hand at Brenda, which is an unusual parliamentary procedure, but okay.
So, essentially, what we're saying is that we're gonna go ahead with our original motion and just...
You're not rescinding it.
And we're not rescinding it.
We're not rescinding it. I just wanted to get a head nod to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Right. That was passed in August.
This whole discussion was, should we rescind the modular? And it went off on a, on a tangent. So, we are saying right now that, no, we're not gonna rescind it.
The original motion can't be disposed of so easily, I think that we need to withdraw the voting.
The original motion passed four months ago, though, Bill.
Yeah. Right, so we're not, right, we're not rescinding that, so we're not rescinding that motion. Or we're not, we're not going back to that motion of however many months ago, I think is what we're trying to say. So, we were, I was just trying to get an idea of who agreed with the fact that we should continue moving forward with the modular.
Another way to ask that, is there a motion to rescind?
Yeah.
That decision?
That was not clear.
Okay, and I apologize. So, is there a motion to rescind, or are we moving forward? Guess we're moving forward.
If we don't, didn't have a motion, we can't rescind it.
Forward's a good place to be.
Well, no, okay. So, we're moving forward with the modular unit. Okay?
Yep.
All right. So, you want to make a second motion, or you want to make a motion?
My first motion, a motion is, and you'll have to wordsmith this for me, Jean, or Marcia, 'cause I don't know what all the terms are, but I, I would like to make a motion that Marcia be able to, to...
To approve Marcia's concept of setting up, uh, help me, Marcia, it's not an alternative program.
The evaluation team, evaluation team offices along with an interim alternative placement for traumatized children.
So, yeah. So, especially a program for Marcia to use the Sudbury building for appropriate special education services.
On a permanent basis.
Second.
Okay, good. We're not gonna say on a permanent basis, because there, because permanent basis would mean forever and ever.
Doesn't have to be the word, but can I have a discussion?
Um, yeah, we can do a discussion. Yes, there's discussion.
Who seconded the law?
Uh, Becky.
Becky did.
Natalie, or Natalie.
No, it was Becky.
It was Becky?
Oh, was it Natalie or Angela?
Natalie's waving, saying it was hers, so.
Okay, thank you for that.
Order. It's now eight o'clock.
Is there a phone number that, can you write down your phone number? Because I need to, I'm gonna be, be calling later. Go ahead. So, it, there's a second, so discussion. Thank you.
Order. It's now eight o'clock. The meeting's over. And we just had somebody leave. This really, discussion really shouldn't take place at this time.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, actually, we could make a motion. There's a motion on the floor, and we could also make a motion...
Extend the meeting?
Right, to extend the meeting.
I'm gonna extend the meeting.
And we have to extend the meeting anyway, because we need an executive decision.
I don't know how much, twenty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Okay, thirty minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the meeting thirty minutes?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay? So, we're extending the meeting thirty minutes?
Still have a quorum.
And you still have a quorum.
Laurie, the only discussion I wanted to have on that, on that motion...
Yep.
Maybe it doesn't have to be included in the wording, maybe it should be, but my sense from the, from the modular unit at, at Lester reaction that the board had at the October meeting to really understanding the implications and details of it, is that they really didn't understand the implications and details of it when they voted in favor of it. And that we shouldn't have that, and that this is a very critical decision we're going to make on behalf of a very critical program, and we shouldn't be a year from now saying, well, we didn't realize that we were committing for a multi-year commitment. The board should realize and accept and acknowledge that that is what we intend to do in fairness to Marcia and the program. The motion doesn't include that, but it's important to me that we somehow recognize and acknowledge that that's what we're committing to.
I, I know personally, I would not vote for it if I knew it was only a one or two year program. I mean...
We have to think about our students and about the longevity of the program, and if it's kids, it should stay there as long as it possibly can.
I got you, and I, and I feel that, but a year from now, in another meeting, and someone says, hey, why don't we move into Sudbury? And then we say, well, we can't do that, because we committed to Marcia, but the motion never committed any timeline to Marcia. That's my point. And it doesn't have to, if you don't feel it doesn't have to, but the board has to recognize that that's a commitment we're making.
That's our intent.
Well, and I would hope that any board that was here, if most of us were here, that we would, would fight for it.
Okay. Well, it's in the minutes that I'm making this statement. If you don't want it to be in the motion, I'm fine with that, too.
It's really up to you guys. I just don't know how you put a time coming in on it.
I, I don't know, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how I could put something in there that I would feel comfortable with, so I would like to leave my motion as is.
I think it's for a program, and, and once you move a program in somewhere, we're not just gonna say, oh, you're out, because we, we want to do it something else, but that's my opinion.
Okay. Accept.
You're pairing it with offices for a whole evaluation team Barry, but you're also pairing it with offices, so it's, it's not just a place where students will be, so they would be misplaced. So, it's, that's why I said, if we go there, it's important, because those are your school psychologists, your SLP, you know, it's, it's quite a few people that would be moving.
And I'm for that, so.
So, I'm gonna pause a second as you're coming to an end. I'd like to tell Debbie and Tom and Kristen and Christine, I don't really think you guys need to stick around. You're welcome to, but it is eight o'clock for you guys, and I think this part of the board meeting is not focused on your schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Allison, you can do whatever you'd like.
So, um, any, so other discussion regarding the motion on the floor?
Sure. One of my concerns tonight, and the reason I, I just feel like this is rushed and hurried, is because we've had this discussion about buildings, how buildings operate, and what we should do with the buildings, and then suddenly, all of a sudden, with one minute left in the meeting, we've got this motion to, to, to begin this program. And we haven't had, I don't think we've finished the programmatic discussion about whether this is a good idea. That kind of seems to be implicit in the board's attitude right now, like, okay, well, you know, this is all settled.
But we did have that discussion. We have and enlisted both of those meetings, unfortunately.
Well, unfortunately, then I'm gonna have to talk about it some, some right now. I, I've just got a grave concern about the idea of separating children from their school at that age. I don't think the North Campus Program for Traumatized Kids works very well. I think they feel stigmatized from that.
Point of order.
You're out of line.
Point of order, we're not talking about...
That's not what we're talking about.
Okay, well, I, I don't think that, that putting, putting young children, separating them away from their peers is...
Order.
Okay, let him have, let him...
He's got the floor, and I would like to have the motion clarified at some point, but he's speaking.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the idea of moving young children away, I mean, I, I really understand the problems of, of, of a teacher in a traumatized, with a traumatized, severely traumatized kid in a classroom. You know, my family took our son out of the public schools for three years because of a situation like that. At the same time, I'm extremely concerned about kids internalizing the idea of stigma, being stigmatized, because they've been separated from their peers and sent to a different school for, you know, forty-five days, renewable perhaps, that it will make children feel like they've been separated out, that they've been pegged as losers, that they don't have the same futures as their peers. So, that's the idea of separation that is extremely concerning to me, and I'm also concerned about the idea of what happens when these kids return. Has the classroom been prepared for their return? Have we gotten the kids and the teachers prepared for the return of somebody who may have made progress but still is potentially gonna have problems? All of that, I just think we've inadequately discussed, and, and it's, it's almost offensive to me that, that we've just kind of tacked it onto this facilities discussion with a minute left to go. I, I think that's a disservice to the families that are gonna be involved and to our, our duty of, of, of thinking these things through. So, that's a secondary issue. The primary one is this, this worry about what the effect on very young children's gonna be to be separated from their school and separated from their, their classrooms for potentially a lengthy period.
So, I would like Marcia to answer his question.
Yeah, please.
So, because...
Because this is not what this is.
There are two options here. There will exist Sudbury. There will not be children there in a school program. There will be a team that will be highly skilled with trauma, that will wrap around a child who's struggling. They will initially go into the school. If the child has to go to Sudbury for up to forty-five days, program them, to get to know them, to do a functional behavioral assessment, to create proper programs, to have the ground, and those service providers, clinicians, social workers, that will happen. It could be a week, it could be two days, it could be up to forty-five days. Principals now have that right. They're able to move students out to assess them. We do that. We don't do it at Sudbury, but we do it at other places. This is not for children to go to a program. That team then is deployed to get that child back to their school as soon as possible, train those staff, and be in that building. It's a response unit for a specific kind of student, and if that student has to leave for a while, and that student will leave for a while, that team will train that group in the building to get them back. This is not a program. This is not exclusionary. That's not how I presented it. I presented it as a responsive team. So, just so that you know, so I just want to clarify that for, for the board, because I've heard the word program unit. So, there won't be a large group of children in Sudbury.
And Jean? I'd like to respectfully say to the board that how Marcia runs her special education program is not a matter of discussion for the board. That's what we hire Marcia to do. The request to the board is whether or not she can use Sudbury School. She can build, she can put her evaluation team wherever she wishes within the district, within the spaces that are already hers. So, the question before the board is whether she can use Sudbury School.
Agreed.
Thank you for that. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is that...
To use Sudbury School for special education services.
There we go. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hands.
One, two, three, four, five.
All those against? And, oh, abstaining? Or to abstain? Okay, motion passes. Okay, so, the last order of business is an executive session that we need.
For personnel matter.
For a personnel matter, yes.
We could move into the room next door while they break things down.
Okay.